I'll call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the January 25, 2022 County Commission Meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. If you need a listening device, we do have staff that can help you with that. I'll just direct you this way towards Trish, and she will direct you in the correct way. And the meeting documents are on the end of the counter. With that, we'll move on to routine business. Item number one is a motion to approve the agenda.
To approve.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next is the consent agenda. I would ask for a motion to approve items on the consent agenda.
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. We have a roll call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have opportunity for public comment. I don't see anybody moving, but I'm just going to tell you for going forward, we started new that we're going to have sign-in sheets for public comments. So if you come into the meeting early and you're planning on speaking, if you would sign in at the podium with your name and address. And also, we will be doing a better job of enforcing our five minutes at the podium for public comment. Our staff has worked to come up with a great big huge clock that will be up here, digital, when we have public comments. So we'll use that going forward.
Madam Chair, one thing about people spontaneously speaking is getting the correct spelling on their name is difficult. And this way, you won't have to give your home address out in public.
Yep, because the information on the sign-in sheet goes in our minutes, and so that's the reason for the sign-in sheet. So, all right, with that, we will go on to regular business. Item number one is a briefing on the American Rescue Act. Final rulings by Susan. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning. Susan Lehman, Auditor's Office. As you are all aware, Minnehaha County received approximately $37.5 million, or will be receiving a total of $37.5 million, from the American Rescue Plan program. And we had been operating or under an interim rule. And on January 6, the U.S. Department of Treasury released a final rule that will govern how these funds are used. And we wanted to brief you on some of those changes that were in that final rule. As it is, there are some differences and clarifications from the interim rule that we had briefed you on earlier in late 2021. One significant change is in the lost revenue calculation. So, under the interim rule, you had to demonstrate that there was a lost revenue and there was a complex calculation that needed to be done. In the final rule, the Treasury is allowing two options. One is the detailed calculation. The second is a standard allowance, per se, of up to $10 million. So Minnehaha County could essentially use up to $10 million for a lost revenue calculation that really would be allowed to be used towards general government services. It's, we still have to follow all the procurement and all of the rules related to federal grants, but it would give us flexibility to use it within Minnehaha County for general services. Secondly, it really expanded and provided details under how we could respond to the public health emergency. As you can see on the briefing memo, I've listed a number of items. And I should maybe mention that as part of what we provided to you, we gave you the overview of, that the U.S. Treasury provided to us that summarizes it. But the entire final rule is 437 pages, so it's very detailed. So, the briefing memo is really a summary of the summary. But the detailed final rule is really where all the details of what we have to do and what's allowed is included. So I won't go through that complete list of what's eligible for the public health emergency, but essentially, it does maintain the idea of COVID response, social distancing and things like that, anything that really complies to as far as how we can help mitigate and respond to the pandemic. The third item that we've identified on here is related to the, how we could respond to the negative impacts of the pandemic. And I've identified a handful of items here, including burial assistance, responding to the need for helping people that are homeless or in our shelters have some hotel stays if they have test positive for COVID and can't stay in those shelters. As far as the fourth item, that really has to do with public sector capacity. That is the Treasury's recognition of the fact that there are needs within the public sector as far as how employees, things that our employees might need within Minnehaha County as far as time spent on responding to COVID, worker retention, allowing for pre-hiring, allowing for hiring above the pre-pandemic baseline, things like that, including technology services. Maybe from there, I'll just pause to see if you have any questions before I go further.
Any questions for Susan at this point? Commissioner Barth?
You know, I appreciate this. So, as I look at item four, rehabilitation and vacant and abandoned buildings, is the city getting money for this too? Because honestly, there's a lot of dumpy stuff in this city.
I believe the city also has ARPA funds as well. From what I recall, they had committed to some of their funding last year. But that would be for, you know, they would have that ability as well.
I don't think we have a way of securing abandoned buildings. I mean, generally, we call the owner in and say, "We're going to demolish it if you don't do it yourself." Is there another way?
And with any of these items, you know, as we go forward with making decisions on how to use the funding, we would have to dive into the final rule for eligibility and things like that because it will have specific criteria that we'll have to meet in order to have it be considered eligible.
Any other questions for Susan right now? All right, continue on.
The other item that I'll maybe mention is, two other items. One would be under the capital expenditure. One thing that was specifically called out as an ineligible use of the funding would be the construction of a new correctional facility as a response to the pandemic. As we've listened to webinars, one of the explanations for that, that specific call-out in the rule was related to the fact that there's a short timeframe for when these funds can be used and understanding that a brand-new correctional facility would be hard to get done in a couple of years or during the time period of the funding. Remodeling of a facility to respond to the pandemic or to increase violence as a result of the pandemic would be allowed, just not the construction of a new one. And then finally, underwater and sewer infrastructure is still allowed as part of this funding as an eligible expense. The one, they've added a couple of new things within that category, including culvert repairs and resizing removal and things like that.
Any other questions for Susan?
At this point, you know, our Auditor's Office is recommending two things. Now that we have the final rule published by the Treasury, we're looking to the Commission to discuss timeline for when decisions could be made to use this funding so that we could ensure compliance and maximize the funding as best we can. And then our second recommendation is that you consider the funding in maybe two categories. One, internal uses within the county that could provide relief and be used within the county. And then the other category would be if there's any external projects you're looking to fund. And we would look to come back sometime in February to have further dialogue on this.
Questions? Commissioner Kerski?
Back in December, we had kind of a working session to discuss all these items and broad overview of where we might be able to use it. And as things have progressed, it appears that we probably could spend pretty much all the money internally, from my understanding. And my position would be, that's where the money should stay. It was given to the county for county uses, and there are a lot of other needs out there. But from what I've seen, I think there's ARPA funding going around to the states, the municipalities. I don't know how far down, if it goes down to the water districts and that type of thing, but I think the state has a lot of money that they can use to work with some of these entities. So, my position is, if we can keep it in-house and use it to do what we can to take care of the county operations, that's where it should stay.
Commissioner Bender?
I would agree with that. I mean, I think the Auditor's Office has done a great job helping us forecast into the future to see, you know, what our means of finance looks like. And, you know, the county, just the way the state system is set up to fund counties, we are really restricted on our funding. And going forward, we are, we are looking at just the inevitability of more opt-outs because that's the only way we can make up the difference in our funding gap. And so I think it's responsible for us, to our taxpayers, to use this money to try to offset the costs, the ever-growing costs that we have so that we can, we can deal with the issues that we are mandated by statute to address and take care of. And I agree, there are a lot, we've received a lot of very compelling requests for ARPA funding, all of which I think are legitimate and worthwhile. I just don't think that, given the structure of our financing, that it would be, we'd be good stewards of the money entrusted to us to spend it on those things when we have so many needs internally that need to be addressed.
Commissioner Barth?
Thank you. So I was out in Pure during the opening of session. I didn't go to those meetings. I went to Water Board meetings. And the A, D, E, N, R, or whatever we call it, the merger of D, E, N, R, and AG, they were telling us they had $600 million for water projects. And they had $3 billion in requests. That's the same thing we had with $37 million and $110 million in requests. Now, previously with the Water Board, we had communities asking for assistance. And these were communities who were charging $2.50 a month for the water. And now they found out they didn't have any money. And it's just, people need to be ready to pay for what they, what's required for their drinking and wastewater. Dean and Dean are right.
I don't disagree with any of the things that are said. I'm not sure where the priorities would end and start in some cases, but the retention of staff and frankly, the growth that we've had in the county without or with limitations is probably the largest priority for me. There's a couple of things that have been discussed in the legislature that frankly, I would like to know more about before I say that that's not a higher priority. And frankly, it's an investment in our future with water and water and sewer-related issues because the county's revenue, 80% of it is tied to frankly, the property tax ratios, if you will. So, if we're going to keep up with growth in the future, we may have to invest now in some of the things that generate property tax revenue. So I would like to know more about what's going to happen at the legislature before I make a firm commitment.
I think we can, we will obviously have more discussions about this in the near future, and we're not going to commit all $37 million in one week, so.
And that's exactly right, Cindy. We can do this in stages. You know, I think our thought is, there are a lot of eligibility or eligible items that we could be doing and recapturing from, instead of general fund dollars, use ARPA funding for in 2022. So with that, just knowing that, we could do this in stages. We can, you know, look at a short-term decision for some of the funding that would be for 2022 internally, and then we could come back for further discussions as well. So we would just look to you guys to consider those items, and then we could come back in February for further dialogue.
You weren't expecting a decision of any kind today because this is just a briefing.
Correct.
And so I think that we will have it probably back on our agenda early. I'm not sure if it'll be next week or if it'll be in three weeks because we don't have a Commission meeting in two weeks. So you will see it in February, and I agree with Commissioner Benega that we have a lot of things that we're going to put money towards in the county, but there may still be some that are advantageous to us going forward that we need to at least consider. And so legislation decisions make a huge difference for us too. So, if there's no more further questions, we will move on with our agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Susan. Item number 11 is authorize the Chairman to sign Amendment Number One to the Joint Powers Agreement between South Dakota Department of Veterans Affairs, Minnehaha County, and the Maple Township. Steve, good morning, Steve.
Morning, Commissioner. Steve Groh, Highway Superintendent. This is, as Chairperson Heiburger said, we're looking for permission to sign an amendment to our joint powers agreement with the Department of Veterans Affairs in Mapleton Township to create that new roadway to the National Cemetery. There are some Xcel Energy power poles in the way. The most efficient way to work around it is to put in an urban section for the Westerly Half Mile. This just changes the language in that joint powers agreement to allow them to proceed with the urban section.
Any questions for Steve?
Move to approve. Second.
My motion and a second. We have a roll call vote, please.
Kerski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Steve. Item number 12 is authorize the Auditor to publish notice to bidders for Minnehaha County Administration Building Asbestos Abatement. Mark, good morning, Mark.
Good morning, Commissioner. Mark Krins, Facilities Department. I'm here today looking for authorization for the Auditor's Office to post notice to bidders for the Minnehaha County Administration Building Asbestos Abatement. I reached out to Geotech Engineering and Testing Services the end of 2020, excuse me, to perform an abatement study in the admin building prior to the demolition. Multiple areas of tile flooring were found containing asbestos under the carpet. So I worked with Henry Carlson, put together bid package for the abatement scope that complies with OSHA and EPA standards. The abatement process will conform with the construction schedule, so there won't be a delay in the project. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Kerski?
What kind of disruption will, I mean, imagining you're talking about what we're on top of right now. Disruption to staff, office hours, that type of thing? Are we, it's going to close things up for a while? What are we talking about?
So there will be, it'll be phased along with the construction project. And they'll set up a complete containment. So be, basically be a negative air pressure rooms with air scrubbers with HEPA filters, plastic hung. I'm not sure of all the details, but I know it'll be all contained. And when they start doing the demo, there won't be any way that the air gets circulated back through the building.
Commissioner Bender?
And would it be fair to say that it's not any more disruption than we're already going to have? Because it goes along with the remodeling that we're doing here in that same phasing, that that remodeling is going to take place, so.
Correct. Yep, so it's basically removing the flooring.
Yeah, tents and negative airflow, and it's, you know, just a little more complex and expensive, I'd imagine.
Correct.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is authorize the Auditor to publish Request for Proposals, RFPs, for Construction Manager at Risk Services for the Juvenile Detention Center Project. Carol Muller, good morning, Carol.
Good morning, Carol Muller, Commission Office. Yes, before you today is the request to authorize the Auditor to publish a notice of an RFP, Request for Proposal for Construction Manager at Risk Services for the Juvenile Detention Center Project. Last week, you authorized the architect, the A and E, the architect engineer, to be sent out. So that process has started. Because we are doing a CMAR, the construction manager slides right in at that point. As Tyler talked about last week, would clarify too, that this is, you have not officially decided you're going to go through and do a JDC. But there's a lot of information to gather before you get to that particular point. And that is what this process is, is it sets us up, but it also ensures that for some reason, it doesn't move forward, you have this stage, the contract. So with that, would we request for you to authorize the Auditor to publish notice?
I'll make that motion.
The motion? I'll second it. The motion is second. I just want to say there are three phases to this. One is the feasibility study, which we're expecting possibly four to six months. And the second one is the pre-construction services during the schematic design and the design development, including establishment of the maximum price. And that's also four to six months. And at any point, we can stop this. If we get through the feasibility and say, "This is not where we're going," we could still stop. So I have a motion and a second to approve this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 14 is to discuss the 2022 legislative session updates.
Thank you, Chairman Heiburger. Before you today is an update that was in your packet, talking about different legislature, as we now happen to be in the legislative session for the, for 2022. The one bill that I just want to point on there that is probably already been heard in committee this morning is HB 1053, which has been sponsored by a representative to the south of us, Representative Ernie Otten. And it's an act to authorize counties to issue bonds for certain expenditures funded by a gross receipts tax. Included in that would be courthouses, public safety centers, jails, accredited prevention or treatment centers, alcohol or other drug treatment facilities, county maintenance buildings, and the construction and repair of county roads and bridges. The one note that we sent to the legislators that are looking at it this morning is that we would like to see them clarify that JDC would be at a juvenile detention center, just to make sure that it's black and white in that to go through and do. So we, I don't know where that's at. Some people listening may be a little bit step ahead.
It actually got moved to Thursday morning.
It did, thank you. Was not aware of that. And the other one I'll just mention is Senate Bill 63, which is to increase the appropriation for the road to the state veteran cemetery by $500,000 because of escalating costs that are, that are out there. We've also got a couple other bills that are just getting dropped that we're paying attention to, that we will probably have some updates on to you for next week.
And if I could add to, I'm sorry, Carol. The Senate Bill 63, actually, that $500,000 is a donation given to the state for that, so they're just appropriating it so that they can move it over to that. So that's actually a half a million dollar donation that was given for that road.
Thank you for clarification. It's a great gift. Commissioner Barth?
Senate Bill 85, being, keeping my eye on water. A West River legislator is proposing to chop off $10 million to, for a pet project in the Black Hills. And, you know, before this, as I mentioned, with the $600 million in water, the department was going to look at all the projects and, and pick them based on what they could get the most bang for. But in this case, someone is trying to, you know, saw off a chunk of it for their own pet. And if that happens with, you know, another 104 legislators each trying to get project for their area, it'll be a mess. I think we're better off if the department chooses the funding destination.
Additional questions or comments on legislative activity? With that, we will move on to item number 15, a briefing to discuss the Fairground Task Force application process. Carol?
We are excited that the task force has generated much discussion in our community about people who are interested in serving on this task force. In order to form the task force, the Commission will seek interested candidates. So for your consideration, a few things that I just started off for today. One, I drafted a application form that I'd like to get your input from. If you've got some additions or changes that you would like to make on that, to accommodate that. My thought is that we would go through and have that in place by January 28. And you would notice, which is the end of the week, we put it on the website, we do a press release out on that. People who've reached out already to our office, we would send it out to, would create an email, because I know some of you have had people reach out, and you will have people reach out, so that you've got it ready to go also, to do. And then also looking at an application closing date, I just put down February 28 as a starting point. That is up to you today to give direction as to what you'd like to see.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Bender?
Thank you for doing this work. I think that you did a great job getting us kind of teed up to get started. The only thing that I thought of when I looked at the application is that we specifically asked for civic voluntary or work involvement with the fair. And I envision this as being a very broad-based committee. And so I wouldn't want somebody to think that we're only looking for people who have already previously been involved in the fair. I can anticipate that we would, like we have with some other committees we've put together, want somebody with expertise in finance, for example, or expertise in construction or master design kinds of work. And so I think that it might be opportunity to add one other question there. Just list any other civic voluntary or work involvement that might be applicable so that we have an opportunity to get a full understanding of that person's interest or skills that they may be able to bring, so we can get the broadest group of stakeholders present to look at that.
Additional things that might be missing from the application? Commissioner Kerski?
Are you proposing that we just strike with the fair or add a whole another line?
I mean, yeah, I would be fine doing, you know, fair or other, you know.
Okay, because I agree. I didn't, you know, I didn't read that or probably comprehend exactly with the fair. Because you're right, in my perspective, from my perspective, that, you know, we need people with a broad base and we need interests from, or perspective from a lot of different interests so that we can really take a look at this, not just from a very narrow point of view. And if all we did was include people that had involvement with the fair, that wouldn't be a very broad-based task force to look at this, so.
And maybe a simple or puts it in there, previous civic volunteer or work involved with the fair. I don't know. I'm going to let you wordsmith it, but I think that's a good point.
Just as I'm making notes as you guys are talking, list previous civic voluntary and work involvement in the community, including the fair. I'll wordsmith it some more. Put it together. Are you okay with the dates?
Yeah, I'm fine with the dates. I think we need to give them an opportunity to actually think about it. I see you, Dan. We're not ready yet. Commissioner Kerski, or Barth, did you have a comment?
I was going to just say, you know, we need to have people who are involved in agriculture, you know, landscaping, plumbing, you know, whatever, chess. And so if they put down their special skill, whatever it is, you know, it might be helpful.
Commissioner Benega?
The only thing that I would add is to make sure that we get the application sent out to a broader base than just Minnehaha County. I think we need to look at it statewide, to be honest, because the fair has become more than just a Minnehaha County responsibility. And frankly, the revenue that it generates comes from the whole region. So I think that needs to be part of the process of developing the public relations, if you will.
Any other comments from the Commission at this point? Okay, then I will take interested citizens who have comments, because there may be several. And I think that Dan actually has a comment. And Dan, if your name's not on my sheet up there, you're going to have to give your name and address, or write it on the sheet. You could write, you could write your address on the sheet if you would like to, but.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dan Kipley, Minnehaha County citizen. The other thing that I think that we want to make sure that the volunteers understand is the time commitment. So if we have snowbirds that are interested, it may be hard for them to participate, as an example. If they're out of state at the time these meetings are held. And try to make everyone aware of, is it a once a month, or a once a week, or every day? Or how big a commitment is it going to be? So that people understand going forward, what type of time commitment they are, they're making. Because there's a lot of people showing interest. But once they get, the thought process is, well, I normally spend three months in Arizona, that kind of, or I'm gone all summer to northern Minnesota. How would that work? So that's one thing I think everyone needs to be aware of. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Are there any other public comments? He makes a good point. I will say that I was on a task force of like in 2020. Is that right, Carol? A long time ago, and maybe 2010? I don't know. It was a long, 2020. It was a long time ago. And it took us two years to go through that task force. It was more than, it was more than 2020. I don't remember. It was, it was 20 years ago. Let's put it that way. It took us two years to go through that task force. We didn't, and we kind of did meetings according to when it was going to work for the committee that got together. Sometimes it was monthly, sometimes it was bimonthly. It also depends on when the staff, who will be staffing this, can pull It also depends on when the staff, who will be staffing this, can pull the information that's requested. And so there's a lot of work to go in it. I would tell you, this isn't going to be a two-month deal, I don't think. This is going to be several months, I would assume. And several may, is more than two. So it may take us six, eight months. We don't know. I don't think we know a timeframe at this point. We know that we will review applications after we receive them at the end of February, and hopefully have those decisions out in March. That would be our goal. And then move forward with what we have. But it is something to keep in mind, that if you're a snowbird, and if we go into December, you might have to make your, do Zoom calls. So any other comments from the commission? We're done with, public seems like they've commented.
Chairman?
Yes.
I would just add that also, other things that we're continuing to work on to bring to you in a, in a few weeks are, one, I had a great meeting yesterday with Susan and Ben from the auditor's office. We talked about budget. And Ben is, I've come to recognize is a great event planner, and gave me lots of good things to think about. And, you know, one of the things we talked about is it depends upon where the facilitator comes from. If a facilitator is from a long ways away, those are going to be longer meetings, because we're not going to fly them in just for a two-hour meeting to happen. We're going to make better use of that facilitator's time. So we're getting that stuff all organized behind the scenes to bring to you shortly.
And those meetings may be in the evening, FYI. If there are no other comments additionally on the application, we can move forward. Carol, I would just direct you to have that, and maybe send it out to the commission as, for final look before it's posted.
Thank you.
So, thank you. We'll move on to item number 16, is a consider a motion to authorize, one, we're going to do this in two parts, a retention bonus for staff. So Carol, you want to just talk about the first part first, because we will have to do two motions on this?
Sure. The first action requested is a, to authorize a retention bonus for qualifying law enforcement hires who reach milestone anniversary dates after August, after April 15th, 2022. I'll introduce this. Chief Deputy Gromer is here, and I will let him take details on this particular part of that. We are requesting approval for a retention bonus program for select law enforcement positions of correctional officers, correction systems off, operators, deputy sheriffs, and juvenile correctional officers. The retention bonus is in recognition of the challenges in recruiting and retaining these essential staff. Under the program, new hires would be eligible to receive $1,000 at nine months, at 18 months, 27 months, and 36 months. Those are nine-month increments with good performance. And the retention bonuses are allowable expenses underneath ARPA dollars. If supported, any newly hired employee in these positions would be eligible to receive the retention bonus on their milestone dates, the nine-month milestone dates that they have. Any current employee that reaches those milestone dates after April 15th, 2022 would be eligible for those, would receive those retention bonuses also. Current employees, however, that would not receive a retention bonus if they hit those milestone bonuses prior to April 15th, 2022. And unknown is, you know, we're in a, it's a difficult time to hire people. There's, there's, every single business is struggling with that. So at this point, what we're asking for is that anyone hired after December 31st, 2022 would not be eligible unless extended by the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners. So it would take place for 2022. If we feel that it needs to continue back then, it would probably come before you again. Questions that Chief Deputy Gromer can answer?
I would say that our law enforcement and correctional officers have worked very hard. And if you think about even just putting yourself in a jail with a whole unit that's got COVID, and now you're supposed to keep yourself safe and your staff safe, it has been a huge challenge. And the turnover in the jail has been significant. Our turnover in the JDC has also been significant, and we're recognizing the difficult job they've been doing. If you're law enforcement and you're out and you arrest somebody, you may arrest somebody who's really sick, and now you've just exposed yourself again. So it's been very difficult for these people as they move forward. Did you want to add to my explanation?
I absolutely agree. You took all my talking points.
I'm sorry.
No. I, I can just second what you say. This, throughout this pandemic, has been very, very labor-intensive for the staff, including the additional stress of exposure, just like everybody else in the community. But the, the law enforcement staff is placed at a heightened risk based on their job and their necessity to respond, necessity to deal with situations that arise, whether they're in the jail or they're out on the street. So obviously with this retention bonus, we are looking to provide some incentive for both recruitment and retention of staff. We have seen higher turnover as of late. We'd like to try to get some programs in place to, to slow or stop that. Obviously, we're, you'll always have turnover, but if we can slow it down a little bit, it'll, it'll really help our operations run smoother. The costs involved with recruiting and training new staff are high, and this, this will hopefully help us to reduce that. We're also seeing lots of these hiring or retention bonuses being put in throughout the state, city, region, nationally, in law enforcement professions. It's, it's becoming more and more difficult nationwide, I think, to recruit, recruit new folks to come into this field. So that's the goal.
Thanks, Jeff. Any questions?
I don't really have a question. I just would say, I mean, there is a reason that we're explaining these things separately, but they do kind of work in tandem, as you'll see as we go through the next part. But I really want to thank the chief deputy and the sheriff for kind of leading the charge and, and helping us think through these issues. And Carrie Dever and Carol Muller have also spent a lot of time, you guys did a good job explaining what is very complicated and have had to work through a lot of details. And we kind of know, high level, what we want to do and what we need to do. You know, we don't have the, the opportunity to close down our establishment like some other, unfortunately, some other employers in town have had to do that. So we really need to make sure we have high-quality people doing these, these jobs, and that's what these two items together are designed to do. But I, I do want to thank you guys, because we're going to talk about this probably in less than 30 minutes, and I can't even tell you the number of hours you guys have spent trying to put this all together. So thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. It's obviously worthwhile project. I think, I, I'm confident it's going to help with some of our turnover-related problems. And quite honestly, the staff that continues to work through the pandemic, continues to work in these roles, these jobs are difficult positions, regardless of the pandemic. So I, it's, it's a worthwhile effort.
Commissioner Barth?
You know, I served in the United States military, and honestly, I often am thanked for that service. But it wasn't that bad a deal for me personally doing it. I was glad to be doing extra push-ups. I wish I could do some now. But I, I don't think we appreciate the people working in law enforcement, especially people in the correctional business. I don't think that they're given the appreciation that they deserve. And I, for one, would like to thank them for coming to work every day protecting us. And I certainly don't want to work on either side of the bars in the jail. But, you know, they're doing it, and thank God. Thank you.
If there are no other comments, I would look for a motion on authorizing the retention bonus. Make a motion to approve.
Second. Benega?
I have a motion, a second. Do we need a real roll call vote on this? It doesn't on my paper that we do, so.
Let's do it.
Let's do it, because just, it's, it's a budget issue, so let's do a roll call. Okay. Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Hiberger? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And then we will move on to premium pay.
Thank you, Commissioner. The action requested today is to authorize premium pay for employees and recognition of their role in providing essential services during the COVID pandemic. We have over 600 employees. And as you just heard Chief Deputy Gromer talk, you can't man the jail if you work from home. Those things aren't options, or arrest people that need to be arrested. There are a lot of people, and by the way, law enforcement makes up just a smidgen over 50% of our staff. Am I correct? Just, oh, just a smidgen under. Almost half. So it's a significant part of our, of our budget that we, number of staff that we have. So in recognition of Minnehaha County employees and the role that they played in providing these essential services, and the opportunity to provide premium pay through ARPA, we asked the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners to authorize a discretionary lump sum payment as follows. The premium pay for the 20 months of service between 2020 and 2022 would be based upon employment status of April 15th, 2022. The value of that premium pay would be $100 a month for those that are in the South Dakota Retirement Class B Public Safety eligible positions. And those really are the positions that Jeff has just talked about, that are face-to-face with people. And the lists of those positions are attached to this briefing memo. All other full-time employees would receive $75 per month of service. And then variable hour or part-time staff would receive a prorated amount of the $75 per month based on the percentage of the full-time equivalent employees. I want to reiterate that employees must be employed by Minnehaha County as of April 15th, 2022, to receive the lump sum payment. The estimated cost on this is right around 1.137 million dollars. And I also want to add that, that the nine elected officials in the county, the five of you, plus 10 elected officials, sorry, the five of you plus the five others would not receive premium pay. So I would open it up for any questions that you may have. And HR Director Carrie Dever is with us today too, for any questions that go beyond my scope.
Any questions about premium pay?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Comment?
I'll just make one comment. You know, the county has very limited opportunity to recognize and reward service for employees. We don't give bonuses, most employers do. We don't even give hams at Christmas. I mean, we don't really do anything hardly. And so, I mean, we're thankful that the ARPA money has provided an opportunity for us to do this. We know, because we work alongside these folks, what a heavy lift it's been the last couple of years. I mean, and so this is just a small token of our appreciation for all the work folks have done above and beyond over the last couple of years.
Commissioner Kerski?
I would just comment that the 37 million's down to roughly 35 million.
And I would tell you that Minnehaha County is a great place to work. So if you're looking for employment, check out our website and see if there's any positions that you would, you would work, that would work for you. We would love to have people working for us. I think Jeff has something.
I just want to step in and talk about this. As Commissioner Bender pointed out, this kind of works in conjunction with the retention bonuses we were talking about. This allows us to basically provide a thank you for our staff that, again, I touched on it earlier, but that their workload was substantially increased, the difficulties of it substantially increased with the pandemic. And this is directly pandemic-related. Thank you for that service. So while we're trying to recruit and retain some of our newer staff, this is an opportunity for us to really thank some of our veteran staff who've been here for a number of years and are very aware of what has transpired through the pandemic and how much additional their work, workload increased. And it's, obviously, I'm representing law enforcement, but the county staff as a whole, their workload has been turned upside down with this, and it just provides us an opportunity to basically thank them, because it has been difficult. Thank you.
And I would tell you, the attorneys have, you know, they had to change how they did their work with the pandemic. Our treasurer's office did a whole lot more of registration of new cars, because everybody ran out and bought a new car, and, or not everybody, but a lot of people. And the registers of deeds, Carol, you probably know numbers better than I do, but the register of deeds also did a lot of property transfers, which if they can't get their work done, that just drops down to everybody else, the banks and, and homeowners trying to move into their homes and a lot of things. So they're, they're, I will let you finish, Carol. Recognizing that there are a lot, it's not just law enforcement, which you mentioned, that really took, took a hit of an awful lot of extra work.
I had a conversation with somebody yesterday who commented that if they can't pay their taxes, they can't sell homes. And sometimes deals fall through if that would happen. That did not happen in Minnehaha County. We are part of the economic engine of this community in, in whether it's signing off on Platts so development can happen, getting records taken care of. It's an integral part, and we did not lose a beat in doing that.
All right. Commissioner Barth?
I like working people, and I'm glad that we have people willing to work. As we've gone through this whole thing, not only have we had issues with like truck drivers, with nurses, with delivery people, but I would point out that our own departments, it's not just law enforcement. Everybody, the, the county commission's staff is short a couple today. And you look at HR, the work that they've had to do to juggle hiring and, and, and stuff. I mean, it's, it's amazing. And I, I just want to say thank you to everybody that is working to keep our community going. As a retired telephone worker, I can remember climbing telephone poles when I was 10 below zero and kind of breezy. Not the best. And then they put me on hold, you know? It's, people are doing that work right now. Thank God, thank them. Thank you.
I do not have a motion yet on premium pay, so I would look for a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, and we're going to do roll call vote again, just to cover all bases. Bender?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We'll go on to commission liaison reports. Any reports? Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, last night, we had a joint meeting of the Sioux Falls and County Planning and Zoning. And we had a couple of potential items that, I told my wife I wouldn't be home till 10 o'clock. As you know, sometimes it goes later than that. But we wound up deferring them. There was a medical marijuana dispensary, a CAFO, a, a storage project in Rowena that's been bouncing around for months. They have a drainage issue that they're not able to work out with the township yet to this point. Anyway, we, we did approve a eligibility that there was some opposition to. It was moving three eligibilities to the southwest corner of 72nd and Jim's Weep Highway. And the person who was concerned about it across the street thought it was a good idea, but it was the wrong location, a common complaint. But as the proponents pointed out, you know, the area that they're coming from is going to be annexed, and so those eligibilities need to be used. And besides that, having a residential development across the street might be better than having a gas station or Burger King or something.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other liaison reports? I attended two meetings this last week where we were working on MacArthur Foundation letters of support for our housing grant. If you remember, in December, we sent out a letter of intent to the MacArthur Foundation for a grant that would support housing in Minnehaha County, more specifically for justice-involved people, coming out of justice-involved issues. We came up with a list of about 20-plus different organizations, nonprofits, and, and others, both statewide and local, to write letters of support to the MacArthur Foundation, and staff has been working really hard, because not only their work are they're doing, they're trying to get this grant up. And, and moving forward, we have a very tight line, as in, we'll be coming to the commission on February 1st for proposal to continue moving for, or approval to continue moving forward with the proposal. And the proposal dates are due to MacArthur by February 9th, with interviews on the February 17th, and note, final notification by March 4th to move this grant dollars forward. The first part of this grant would be a in-depth study of how we could use those funds, and I think it's about $750,000 was the max that we could be given. So that has started. The city and the county are working collaboratively on this together, and I think we've got a good start, so. I will say, this is going to go under the Ahab. This is an Ahab project. This was just kind of the steering committee at the beginning, and Ahab will pretty much be taking this whole project over, so.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Kerski?
Update ahead of time, I guess. The Link Board was formed about a year ago, and tomorrow, we, I will be chairing the annual board meeting for the Link. We'll take a kind of look at our past year. We've been open about nine months, so we'll look at our numbers. We'll kind of look at a strategic plan, and where are we going? We have the whole second floor. Should we be, you know, discussing options? So anybody have any comments or suggestions? We're definitely always willing to listen, but the Link has been, as a board, has been a up and running for a year now, and on to bigger and better things with it, I hope.
It's a great program. Any other liaison reports? Okay. Any non-action commission discussion? This is old business or new business? Seeing none, I'm assuming we have no executive session? Carol, correct? Then I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Dever say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We're done.
Wow.
Can we sign this off?